Quite loud.
Hey, I call this planning board meeting to order. You don't have Jim to point?
We do not.
Okay. So the approval of the draft minutes from February 4th.
Um, I realize what happened. So you were doing um the work session. And then Randy came in with his new business. So that was why I it goes work session, new business. And then I put the master plan updates in the new business section, which I shouldn't have. They belonged in the work session. But so so my question from a from the big picture is, do you want the minutes to reflect the actual order of things in the meeting? Which means that we went from a work session to new business to a work session and then new business again? Or do you want me to just like keep with the subjects that were in the agenda and move things around to match? Does that make sense?
I would follow the terminology of the meeting because everyone watching the Zoom is going to see that's right.
Perfect. Okay.
Right. And the other thing is Sarah wasn't here when we did the master plan stuff. She had left, so I wouldn't want it to read like she was still there.
Okay, so I'll I'll add then. So new business will be one for Randy's PRD. And then I'll switch back to um work sessions intake.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
What else?
I think he just had his own spelling. So on second page number C, which is track size should be correct. Yeah.
Jim is not one of the remote participants, is he?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's good to know. Because I think when we get to the Seoul Smart Agenda item, you'll have.
So we can unmute them.
Yeah.
Yeah, hello, everyone.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
I I stayed home because I didn't want to share what I caught over the weekend, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I wasn't asked us. The last meeting, but what I'm guessing, I've not read the meeting. It's like there was a discussion of. PRD. The other documents that I don't see.
Not yet. Right, we did you send a PDF? Yeah, they'll give an update. It was an informal consultation.
Do you have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Or how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Invitation for public comment. I guess we don't have any. So Randy had called me and asked if he could come in just to give us an update. So by the time he called me, we had already really set the agenda. So I didn't think it would be a big deal if he took up a little time. We don't really have a big.
Let's unless it's an official submission should be okay.
Yeah. So I guess Randy, we're all ears.
Okay, well, thank you guys for seeking me in. It's wonderful. I just really wanted to update. Where I was with things and get your suggestions and comments. And I have little packets for. People that aren't here before. It's been pretty cold, but the surveyor guys have been working up a storm.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was thanks.
So basically, I thought it'd be helpful to just kind of go over where we are. And what your scouts are. Just pretty sick of braving wind out there.
One more day. I think we're getting one more day.
So basically, what I was wanting to do.
Yeah.
Is just kind of give you an update on where we are, what we're doing. Sanford has been really wonderful and is working to try to get the final little details organized. So for you guys that weren't here last time, basically what we have is a proposal to take my house, which is mine, 12 acres plus, which is the orange on the left. And to basically reconfigure it. Like a 200 acre parcel, which is in yellow. Each two. Switch it and actually follow the existing stone walls that are also orange. So it doesn't change the size, it just changes the configuration. And then annex one H1, which is yellow. Where the orange was in part. So that would be a lot line subdivision. And that's kind of what we're thinking about and focusing on now. And then after that is to try to think about the three. PRD, which is in blue. And the large parcel, which is, I think, 210 acres. Continues to be pretty much the same size except for the blue and follows around. And we just take the blue out of the yellow. So that's kind of a three step process. In what it does with the cover sheet kind of helps you. Kind of helps us all stages. So the first plan is the existing property, which is the 12 acre parcel. Which is in the orange, which is the way it is right now. In my little house, it's on the right hand side of that. So we would be moving over the orange in the second part to adjust it to again, the same 12.1 acres. And then we would add in the yellow, which is 220 acre or 190. So hopefully this will funny. And then see what the thoughts could be for the three block PRD. Which is. So that gets everyone up to speed for now. Any thoughts and questions so far? So Sanford's working on that. We should have those plans really in detail for everybody to look at and see what any comments or thoughts are. They've been obviously going totally like a building it all the same what they do. So I think it's pretty much right on target. I have a rough draft of the. Word and state, I guess, for you guys to look at. This is really a rough draft. And I've given the same exact thing to Sanford last week. And we just started kind of filling it out and getting an idea of the application. With the application.
Where are the is the road front and per di's lots or how would they?
It would be this.
This is the road franchise and then so you get to that third one.
Yes.
Private driveway. Exactly.
Um, where was that, Randy?
This is Powers.
Yep. And left side. This one cross talk.
Minor.
I mean, major. The client is considered a minor was. Because it's a lot behind us. First.
The first.
Coming on this. But then he is. So now he gets that far. No, there's. The law. The law. Everything. This was, I mean, they're gonna give us two applications.
The roads really.
Yeah, because they'll do the lot line adjustment.
It is very logical. I'm trying to kidnap you guys every time you do that. It looks, you know, different piece of paper.
Yeah.
So basically. I was hoping that you guys could take some time at some point and certainly. Application to go for the loss and any adjustment. I did get great help with Carolyn Elizabeth to go through all the butters, which there's plenty core. So in the town of Wilton was awesome too. So I've attached that to the. Two applications that I can do in that again, some draft, but just kind of focusing in a little bit and getting an idea. I kind of remember writing that before. So on the top of it, I just put minor subdivision, lot line adjustments. That's.
Okay, so but I'm just getting more into it. Yeah, so it changes. So we're into this is your piece here?
Yes.
Okay, and this I see. And then this piece over here. Yeah.
So basically, what we're we tried to do was keep the 12.1 acres in orange, which is existing on that.
Right.
And you can figure it so.
So this is where that.
Yeah.
It's planning to do all at once.
Correct.
Or some.
Okay, that's just thank you because I'm like. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
For this application, is this just for the boundary adjustment?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Because I think it makes sense. And maybe you guys have a better way to think about it. But to do the lot line adjustment first, because then that creates a lot for the PRD potentially.
Right.
So you don't have to do this section either.
No.
Okay.
What is the total acreage of this here?
Those have to do the minus.
Right.
Well, that's just the lot life.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, not the exact. And we can make it, we can a little bit either way. We have a lot of leeway as far as extra acres.
Right.
So that's the great. And I really do want you guys to come see it because it's absolutely beautiful. It completely makes sense.
Should we wait till it gets a little colder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another holiday New Day.
Yeah, wait for Freezing Rain Day.
So Evan is kind enough to meet with me and live. And we come off this on Thursday. And he's going to just kind of go over the plan so that we don't have any surprises. You know, not the corporate space spots. That just stick is doing homework well. And so basically, that's kind of where we are. I'm waiting for Earl to finish his final final.
They don't have a call.
Yeah. Yeah.
Get my mask up.
Just for the record, I feel great.
So that's pretty much where we are. And I think that once Earl finishes the plans concisely, then I can bring those in. We can kind of look at the application and see if there's something else that we need to think about for that. And then I think if we could do the first lot line adjustment part makes sense. And then after that, go into the PRD. And he'll already have the PRD all done. So if there's any questions, say, poorly back and forth, we'll answer it. Kind of not waste your time with that, which is. So that's where we are.
Do you think he'll be done within the next couple of weeks or like consider? Okay. Yeah.
Done all the other property surveys. So it's really great that everything completely ties in. So.
So just make sure it's on the next agenda.
Yeah, if you guys don't mind.
I don't know if it'll be enough time to get out, you know, notices and things like that, but just to get it on the agenda.
So we're very excited about it, and it really is awesome property. And I live there, right in the middle of it all. So I want to have it really bright and beautiful and wonderful. So a lot of thought and stuff. So it's certainly give me follow up. If you guys have any questions or.
Sure. I I mean, I would like to see the property. At that point.
Yeah, me too. But not till it's warmer.
Yeah. Thank you guys for.
Thanks for keeping us up to speed.
So did I call for the agenda or?
I think just let us know if you don't want to be on. I won't be here for the next meeting. Yeah, but I think just let Kathy know if you don't think you'll be ready.
Oh, yeah.
There will be a, it wouldn't be a.
Not a hearing.
It's not a hearing.
No, it just has to be on the agenda, though, if we're looking at it. Taking the next step.
So Kathy should just, you're gonna. Put Randy at bail.
Yeah.
Thank you. Keep warm.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Randy.
Okay, old business, all purpose storage, do we have? I haven't heard anything of you.
Nope.
A big rush, apparently.
I'm sure the ground is frozen.
Yeah, but they do still owe us money.
They owe us money and plans.
How long is that valid for?
Well, the ZBA approval is good until May, I believe. It was in the notice that we sent. We told them it has they have to do something by that date. Otherwise, it becomes void and they'd have to reapply.
Some little longer. That's the cutoff date.
Yeah. I think it was in their notice of decision. I'd have to go back and check, but I'm pretty sure I put that in there.
So the next order of this would be the Seoul Spark Program. And Jim, are you there?
Yes, I am. How are you all doing?
We're doing better than you.
Yeah.
So what's what you know?
Well, I attended the the introduction and as you know, as you're all aware, we're, you know, we put in an. We registered. So they're going to meet. It looks like they're going to try and do one meeting a month for about an hour. But they offer lots of different things. They do. It's interesting. They have these these medals that you can get just by registering will be a bronze, I think. But you can, you know, work your way up to silver and gold. They offer all kinds of assistance, technical assistance. They'll certainly help us with our ordinance. They they offered, you know, lots of statistics. Obviously, New Hampshire, just like every other state, is is definitely growing exponentially every year with solar. We've got like fifth, I believe, 50 megawatts worth of solar energy put in in New Hampshire last year. Let's see. You know, so they'll they'll, I'm looking at the slides here to remind me. So they can do planning and zoning feasibility assessments permitting. You know, offer marketing, you know, so they'll come in and talk to you, you know, help us with understanding what the making sure that our our folks, if they contract or are interested in contracting with a solar company, that they'll do a review of it to make sure it's not. You know. Bad, I guess, for lack of a better word right now. Though, you know, most of the companies are really good and, you know, but they they will look over contracts to kind of help make sure that folks understand the shortfalls. I guess there I saw some emails. They set up a meeting for March, but then they canceled it, I see. But they there was a couple of invites and then a cancellation. So I don't know if maybe they just double. Doubled the invites, but we'll have to find out what's going on with that. It's March 17th, I think.
Yeah, so I tried to respond to sign up for it, but I couldn't because it was thinking that I was the Temple NH Temple Plan Temple NH.gov. And so I emailed. Is her name Sarah?
Yeah.
I emailed her back and said, that is an alias. And do we need to use our own personal emails to be able to get into the meeting? And so she sent a new invitation. But I may be the only one that got it because I was the only one that answered. So I think if others want to attend that. You can, maybe we can let Jim know and Jim can email all our email addresses to her and she can send new invites.
Sure.
That may be what the cancellation thing was. I'm not sure, but I I think, yeah, if you can collect everybody's emails, then we're not all bombarding her and then she'll have them all together.
Works for me. Well, it sounds like a good opportunity. So and, you know, it's timely, timely for us, I think. I I found myself wondering, you know, we've got that hairy organization locally. If for those that aren't familiar with that. It might be nice to kind of touch base or coordinate between seeing what they what they have and how they work with. Or if they have knowledge and work with this folk, these folks as well. Because they offer similar services.
I I I know them. They're actually mostly, at least back four years ago, they were working with homeowners to help them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Install on their own.
Yeah, they're they're definitely not, you know, state agency or anything like that. It's just a you know, a group of folks that that share a common interest and they, but they'll do when I say similar things, they'll they'll also look at, you know, if you want to go solar and you want to just contract somebody to do it, they'll look over the contract and make sure that, you know, that that's that you've got what needs to be in there. So they they offer similar kind of guidance, so to speak. But I attended one of their webinars recently and I'll and I'll probably, I actually, I attended a raising a little over a year ago. So I'll I'll probably get more involved with them on the side on my own as I get closer to putting my own solar up, but.
That's great.
Do you really else have any comments on?
So I think they're reviewing our zoning ordinance right now and our permitting. Is that what you understood too, Jim?
Yeah, yep. Yep.
They'll let us know, I guess, what they find.
Yeah, because the bottom line for me, from my perspective, is they kind of said, stand by, we'll get back with you. And aside aside from the invite to the next meeting, that's pretty much all we've got so far.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I did send it to Rob Wills as well, who's the Renewable Energy Committee Chair. So he's hopefully reading the emails, but I have not heard anything back from him directly.
In the loop.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to get involved with something here.
So implementation, master plan.
I sent an updated. So I just more or less copied and pasted from the first part in the introduction is from New Hampshire OPD. And then the map from the RSA itself. And then the next section where it says from 2003 future land use, that's text from the last version. And then the next says new, that's that's about. You know, the grant and why the other sections weren't really looked at in detail, just so people know there's not new recommendations. For, you know, municipal buildings and transportation and traffic was the other. So otherwise, it's pretty much as is. And then based on our last meeting, I tried to put the status in as I recalled, but I have to admit, I didn't look at Kathy's meticulous notes when I did it. So that would have to be double checked just to make sure that I got everything right, just from my notes. And you'll see that I added at the, let's see, let's be on. Yeah, page six, the community facilities and the traffic and transportation from the 2003 version. So that's the latest. I didn't think it made sense to put in any text on those two particular chapters since we didn't look at those this year. It's just more of a status update.
We're in gold without anything more than you would be just saying, this is our sort of our status and is it like a blame tool?
Yeah, I mean, there's some TBDs in here, which some cases are to be determined or some are, we need more information.
Right. Well, the hunger work.
Yeah, right. I mean, they're ongoing, so. So I think, you know, the ones that are TBD are worth a conversation. You know, do we want to do anything more with them or do we want to say they're not no longer relevant or?
He's kind of a big checklist person themselves.
Yeah.
So I wonder if it wouldn't hurt to just in the agenda. Every month, pick one of these things. Give us to talk about it today. We want, you know what I mean? And these TBDs. Ladies playing the first one. Maybe next time we talk about that, you just say, yeah, that's not someone that tapped them this year or, you know, maybe just going down through the list.
Right.
I'm not trying to do a whole thing in one meeting.
Well, now, so this is, I mean, this is from 2030. So we can also decide if it's relevant or not.
Right.
Like, if it hasn't. If no progress has been made on it since 2003, then maybe it's not good rate. Or maybe it's not. Maybe it's not really under the planning.
Right. Well, like, if you look at the traffic and transportation ones, some of them, I know the streets committee has done some work on this, so it feels more appropriate to reach out to them to find out what they've done. To update that section. So some of it isn't, like you said, isn't us. It's but we would need to get the information from somebody else. And I think, you know, you talked about the community facilities and the highway garage, like you guys, your committee has worked on that. The land use committee has worked on that. The CIP is, I guess, going to be looking at that. So that's again, not something that we would necessarily have the answers to. And some of these things are select board. So.
Yeah, right. And I guess that's what's possible. So maybe it's like an update of who's the responsible party.
And just checking in with them. Yeah, it's some of it is follow up with, yes, with other people. And just checking in with them, yeah. It's some of it is follow up with, yes, with other people. So I don't know. Like if somebody wants to follow up with. Well, select board is you, George, so.
Some of the things in here I can't agree with. Uh, you mentioned code enforcement officer.
What number is that?
Two or three times, on page six, showing.
Uh, yep, that's from the two thousand and three version.
Okay.
Oh, the scenic roads.
We're not getting the current select board is not interested in getting a code enforcement officer.
Well, look at, yeah, and I'm, I'm, we didn't have one in two thousand and three either, so I'm not sure why that was there.
Yeah.
But that's what was in the two thousand and three version.
What number is that?
Um, on page six, under traffic and transportation, number eight is evaluate the use of the scenic road designation for certain roads in Temple. Is that something the select board is pursuing or planning to pursue? For any roads in Temple?
And then on page five, you have it. And the number ten.
Mm-hmm, the sign ordinance.
I saw it two or three times. We discussed having a code enforcement officer, but has an added expense.
Mm-hmm.
And you have the code enforcement officer going around and checking everybody's property, make sure they only have two cars or whatever.
Yeah, no, I think this is just standard language. I don't think, we didn't have a code enforcement officer then and we don't now, so.
Right. It's been discussed many times.
Yeah.
So what, what would happen is because there isn't a code enforcement officer for this.
It just defaults.
It would delegate up to the select board.
Right.
Right.
Right, just the select board.
We can just cross it out. Yeah.
If we don't have the, the positions, no point.
Yeah.
We have positions.
Yep.
You know, the select board gets a complaint about somebody and somebody's property, we do go out, check it out.
Right.
Right.
So it's really, we should just say select board.
Yeah.
That was number ten on page five and that was.
That actually says plan.
And the sign ordinance was updated, so.
Yep, that's right.
Um, that's done. And then on page six, you said number eight. Is the town, or is the select board, or anyone in town looking at scenic road designations that you're aware of?
No, this is, I'm trying to think of the.
Rev Road?
You said?
Rev Road B.
I think they talked, I think they talked about it at one point, but I think it didn't get pursued.
I'm trying to think, uh. Where the east road was. Would it oppose? It was a number of years ago, somebody ordered a scenic road designation.
But either way, we don't have a code enforcement officer, so it would default to select board.
Right. And the select board, as far as you know, is not looking at doing that anytime soon. No, scenic road designation.
Not at this point. Usually somebody comes to the board and asks if they can.
Yeah.
And then it has to before the town.
So is that an NA?
Well, it would probably remain TBD. It's just, this is a list of, this is a list of recommendations from, summarized here.
From two thousand and three, whatever work they did in two thousand and two, probably, to put this plan together, which I, I wasn't around then, so I don't know what. I don't know what community engagement, what work was done to come up with this list. It, it's just the list that was in there.
I would say if nothing has been done about it and it's not top of plan, it could could also just remain in there with a TBD.
Yeah, yep.
As a future note.
Yep.
Not sure what the benefit of a scenic.
No planned actions.
No planned action, that's it.
Yeah.
Because TBD.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
That's better, yeah.
It's a potential action, so we don't lose the thought.
Right, right. That's a good idea.
Yeah, so that's just.
So, and then this number four under traffic, that also feels like a complete streets one, right? So this number seven, the adoption, this is still under traffic and planning. Adopt, um, page six. Consider the adoption of an access management plan for New Hampshire Group One O One through Temple. Um, I did reach out to SWR PC because they're responsible for all of the road planning in our region with the state. And he said he does, has, does not see anything on the state's to-do list related to that. If it's something the town wanted to do, we would have to initiate it, but it's not something they're planning for. So that is a you know.
System management plan.
Has to do with the intersection on one oh one and forty-five and as well as, um, there's the S curves. At one point, they were talking about straightening that. That is no longer in the state's plan.
Wonder what changed that?
Probably funding would be my guess.
Yeah, it wasn't a high priority.
Wasn't a high priority.
Enough accidents.
Are you talking about the sharp curve?
Yeah, yeah. In two thousand and three, I guess it was looked at, but they're, they've not looked at it since.
Kinda.
Oh, the brook, maybe.
Because you'd have to put another bridge and everything.
A lot of.
Yeah.
But is, is the access.
Be nice to what's right and go.
Yeah. But is access management more about how many curb cuts we're going to, you know, a plan that would limit curb cuts that are just not random? I mean, if you think of, pretend you, pretend there was an access management plan on one oh one A through Milford to Maritza, Nashua.
Okay.
And that access management plan said one traffic light per mile maximum.
Yeah.
Period.
Right.
And at that major intersection, traffic light was the easy U-turn.
Yeah.
And so anybody crossing the street would just go down a mile, turn around, come back. And everyone going through wouldn't have it. If that had been an access manager plan, you know, three decades ago. It would be a mess today. I think, I think that's more what an access manager plan means. Okay, so you get, you get intersection forty-five. Where do we want our next big intersection? Is it going to be? Are, are we going to allow a massive traffic light intersection at Revolutionary Road someday? When commercial industry creeps up there, or do we want to not allow that and say, hey, people go up to the top of the mountain and come back if you want to cross the road? It's kind of that thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know, when, when Lowe's and Home Depot show up, boom, boom.
So not.
Which I hope doesn't happen.
I think many traffic lights from Nashville or Temple.
Uh, at least. I go through them every day.
Yeah.
I just have to count them.
Yeah. But it's, but I think that's more what they think, when they talk about access management, it's curb cuts, it's, it's, do you, do you want it to look like, like Nashville and Amherst, or do you want it to look different? In the future. So. But it's not, there's no.
No planned action.
No planned action.
And on number nine on traffic and transportation, also page six. Support the continued, support the continued participation by the town in the transportation improvement planning process. I, to my knowledge, n- nobody has attended the transportation planning meetings at SWR PC.
Yeah, we, we do get uh notices from the state.
Mm-hmm.
Public roads, I guess, tell us what they have plans.
Right.
Improving the roads in different places.
Okay. So that's ongoing. Sounds like ongoing.
Probably ongoing as needed, yeah.
How about in the community facilities section? Everything here is TBD. And most of it is select board or select board and other people. Annual review of municipal operations. I think that's the budget committee, right? I mean, it's money related.
Like it's money related and it's not something that like, yeah, the planning board is going to.
Right. And the staffing, that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate select board from there.
Oh, no, no. No, I'm not suggesting that. Yeah. I was just saying it is getting done.
Yeah, yeah, excuse us.
A lot of these things evolve all the time.
Right. The staffing stuff, that's all ongoing, right?
Yes.
Long range plans, I would maybe add CIP. Um, same with number four, add CIP. And then that's, I think that number five is done, right? Because we have a CIP now.
Yeah.
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 See, it's not that hard. Look at us. Do we want to go back to the beginning and see if we can get through some of the others?
I think the ones that are, yes.
So maybe go back to page three. Roads management strategies, that's the innovative.
Can I just add a question, a question on one?
Sure.
Before we go ahead, where it says criteria, um, I missed the conversation last week.
Yeah, so we were, I think we were going to ask, um, Sarah, our SWR PC consultant?
For?
What, what, what are the tools used to evaluate impacts on the town?
Okay. Okay. So that's just, we'll get back to that.
Yeah.
One going and one of the two. Growth impacts, I guess, is what you're trying to say.
And that's the same with number three. Um, and that maybe it's the same with number six, but I mean, number six refers to the RSA, which is innovative land use um zoning or zoning regular, RSAs. And there is a multitude of options there, which we don't use um most of them, but that is where the workforce housing ordinance came from.
Yeah.
So that's, that's probably a.
Is that ongoing today?
Yeah.
Be working on?
Yeah, twenty twenty-five hop, maybe. CBD. Play specific soil mapping standards. And I think we were undecided on whether we wanted to do that or not, right, at the last meeting?
Yeah, we talked about it.
I think was Sarah going to present us with some examples to consider?
Bring it in. I'd like to understand this better. I'm not
Yep.
super familiar with what that means.
So we'll ask her.
You probably know us, but.
Well, it could be, I'm looking, I'm thinking two different things. Like if we're talking site-specific soil mapping, standing type by soil scientists. They go out and, and if you're doing a flight plan or something, like it bends, they, soil scientists go out and do all the soils, because you can read the soils maps, the general stuff, and it's you know, hit amongst me. And then they go out and tell you what it really is.
What it really is.
And what's really good for the user that site, or will it support septic system, will it support drainage for development, all that kind of stuff based on the real soil that's there, not the soil map.
Mm-hmm.
So.
To do, other towns require that to be done as in their.
Yeah, for site plan.
For site plan.
Yeah.
But not necessarily subdivision.
Not, not, I think subdivisions generally escape that because they're individual lots.
Right.
And so I guess if you had a bunch of roads, maybe, but
Yeah.
it's still at that point. You know, like a two lot subdivision is no point.
Okay.
Yeah. Or it might matter in some towns, the minimum lot size is a function of soil type.
Right, so, you know, that's the other one.
Right, right. That's what I thought, because there's, there actually is a, I don't know if it's a House bill or a Senate bill, that is recommending that towns adopt language that their lots are based on the soils, not, not like a standard size, it's based on the land.
Yeah.
And some towns do that, I think Dover, maybe. There's one over in the Seacap coast that does that.
Want to say like I don't, at least partially, because I know we did some lots and you had to prove, um, oh, with a whole bunch of test bits, like the presence of lead within a certain depth and all this kind of stuff. And that helps determine how many lots you have.
So there's more to it than just septic?
Yes. And drainage units. It's just that, um, what the whole lot capacity is like for, uh, for the state, for septic systems. You know, your septic system might be small, but they want twenty thousand square feet of continuous land that could support septic system. So a lot low, how much of the life of that septic system? All group is getting one ground and it'll take care of that. So, um, I would suppose then, like if you were doing in town, let's say you did a, a new zone, decided to do it by soil space, said, well, in the village district, it has to be minimally twenty thousand square feet because we all have septic systems. You know, and then you put the state, you have to subtract, well, at least steep slopes and well, where it is, so it ends up being about an acre.
Yeah.
So then you would, that's how the zoning would, I guess, reflect how many lots you can have, I'm not based on, if you were a septic light.
It's based on the soil.
The soil, how much you've actually fit there. You know, the loading requirement.
Yeah.
So you say.
That seems a little more extreme than I think versus like this to me reads like we require, it could be required that a site plan have the soils tested done.
Yeah.
Versus like letting soils drive our lot sizes, which is something.
I was reading it the other day.
Totally. Like.
Hmm.
I don't know.
So in our latest, um, site plan review of the storage unit.
Yeah.
Right.
It became somewhat important what the soil types were to talk about drainage.
Right.
Where we just, they just did test tests, like they didn't do anything beyond that.
Right. So we could have, if we had this, we could have said, hey, we want a site soil scientist to go out there and do site-specific soil mapping and tell us you know, a couple test results. Not that much data.
Right.
Where he's going to go out there and do a bunch of work and figure out maybe it's all compacted, maybe even though it's sand, it's like cement.
Okay.
That's how I was reading it, because that it was the soil scientist thing and not the zoning.
Right.
Lot size.
Okay.
So that wouldn't affect uh, an applicant that had a three acre lot, met all the other criteria and met the state septic, uh, you know, approval and all the specifics, it wouldn't affect that person. So it's not more, it wouldn't be more stringent.
No, I, I think it would be more like aimed towards psych.
Says subdivision, but I think what we're talking about is maybe that's something we're just interested for.
So when I talk about housing, we're talking about commercial. Because it doesn't say that.
It does say subdivision.
Yeah, and that, which is why I was, and, and I feel like Sarah mentioned that when she was here at the last meeting.
Well, if you had a PRD thirty little houses right here.
Mm-hmm.
And the separate things you probably do on that.
Yeah, right.
Agreed. And if that was in, so if that was in an old sand pit, it would have a better chance of finding, it would have a better chance of of passing.
Right.
Yeah, steep slopes and there.
Right, right.
So maybe, you know, for the site plan review only, subdivision.
Yeah.
Or maybe, or maybe it isn't in our PRD or something, right, like.
Right, you have to. Yeah.
To certain use cases.
Yes, I think a regular subdivision.
Yeah, regular, normal.
Right, right, right.
You know, if you look at, at this PRD plan, it's basically.
You know, if you look at, at this PRD plan, it's basically two acre lots.
Yeah.
Subject system, we would have to trust a test, today we'd rip trust a test bit.
Yeah, 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 we haven't even think that one, so maybe you'd have to sort of craft.
Right.
Some rules and say, well, what's the threshold that triggers that?
Right.
And you know, on three last subdivisions are probably even a, a major subdivision, I would say maybe, but maybe. Like a cluster.
A cluster, yeah, yeah. So I'll put in, shall I put in twenty twenty-five? Hop development and we'll revisit this when we are reviewing the site plan review.
See like, uh, look at some other towns, see what their languages.
Yep. The next one, amend the subdivision site plan regulations with criteria for developments of regional impact. So there's state criteria now for regional impact, so I don't know if this was put in before that came out. Or if we just need to add a note that.
To me, it seems like it was probably put in before it came out, because for the site plan, we did do regional impact.
Right, so, right, and it was criteria that I got from the state, so. There's rules on it now, so.
And it indicated that you should do that, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So is that just done?
I think it was done.
Next, down to economic development. First one, ongoing and. Uh, at the HOP grant review in twenty twenty-three said, we did a good job with home businesses. The next one, investigate establishing an agricultural forestry overlay district. This is interesting, this one, um, well, here's one to cross out cold enforcement officer, right?
Both, both of them, one and two.
Oh, yeah, yep. There's actually a bill being presented, I think I even printed it out, actually. That would require, and I don't know if this is gonna pass, but it would require us to have a chapter. Um, it, it says, the bill expands the scope of the master plan. To include preservation of agriculture land and promotion of food production enterprises, as well as any other relevant topics. It's a little vague that. But it would require us to have a chapter. Um, for agriculture and food production.
What would you do with the, so it says, establishing a forestry overlay district.
Yeah, the forestry bit, I, yeah.
So how, how do you make a district that benefits those things and not, like, what does that mean? You wouldn't want us. For subdivision.
Yeah.
Residential, the benefit would be, oh, you get one extra lot. What would be the benefit for a forest guy, get a bigger lot? You know, you already get big lots, I, I don't see what you could do to make.
Then I think, would it be that? You couldn't make those smaller, or you couldn't.
We need more information.
I don't know.
I mean, one, one example I could think of is farm stands, so sale of agricultural product. If it was favored and easily permitted, wouldn't trigger a commercial. Zoning requirement. Because you have farm stands. Maybe, I'm guessing.
Agricultural uses are.
They're pretty wide open.
Pretty wide open, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see how it helps at the moment.
Yeah, maybe it's. Yeah, need more info or no action at this time? Uh, let's see. The next one is the, um, participation in economic development organizations. I don't know if the select board. Does anything like that now, but I'm on the economic committee at SWR PC, so I guess that's something. Evaluate parcels townwide to identify sites suitable for future industrial or commercial development. So, if, if you read the text sections in the two thousand and three master plan, it talks about Route one oh one. And considering, as you, I think, mentioned before, Route one oh one for commercial or industrial development. And I, I, we haven't polled the community to find out where they stand on that, so. I don't know, but Conservation Commission was one of the committees involved in that discussion, I guess, so I don't know. Nope.
That's, I've, that's my recollection, and so it's always been the case that.
But I mean, what does that, what does this really even mean?
But we don't have a zone.
Well, we don't have, okay.
We have no commercial zone.
So if we had a commercial zone.
It would probably be on one oh one. Well, George wants it on forty-five down in his fields.
Yeah, he's gonna put a gas station.
Right, there's a perfect spot, right?
Make sure you put a Starbucks next. Or Dunkin' Donuts.
I've already been told that, uh, those fields coming in from Greenville. Uh, Dave Foley's been working up there for me.
Yeah.
What a beautiful sight, he said, you don't want to put any houses in.
Don't say anything, you're gonna get in trouble, George.
Yeah.
Leave it at that.
Maybe the Conservation Commission will give me a lot of money for that land, keep it out.
So do we wanna just, um, no action at this time? Do we look at other towns? I, I think we look at other towns zoning ongoing. George, are there any partnerships with regional educational institutions, local businesses to develop training and retraining programs? To build appropriate skills for employment? It's very aspirational. No action.
No.
I don't know, I'm for each of kids at the farm.
They're giving them very industrious children, providing training to six-year-olds.
Yeah.
And then the next one, I just would propose adding CIP. Housing goals from two thousand and three. I think we, I had that we did the first two. Congregate housing for the elderly. That was.
So, would that be something that has to go to town?
I hate to say no action, because we're looking at housing not specifically for the elderly, but in general.
I know, it's been brought, it's been on the table at several meetings in recent times, so.
Maybe twenty twenty-five, when we revisit? Conservation. Um, natural resource inventory, done. I guess we haven't formally adopted it yet, but. Um, publicly owned trail system to the regional trail network connection.
So would that be like the WAP act?
Well, that's what I was, yeah.
I've been trying, but it's hard.
Get land, uh, so is this an ongoing then?
Yeah.
The aquifer was two thousand and thirteen, wetlands was two thousand and thirteen, so that's the next two. Open space plan is part of our scope of work for this year. The conservation fund was created, correct? Um, conservation subdivision regulations, again, that's the mountain conservation district. So there's one there, but not in all districts. We're working on steep slopes. Scenic view shed protection ordinance. I think that's a no action at this time, is that? Safe to say?
I think that means finding certain features of the town that we want to try to.
Yeah, I'm.
That's so subjective.
It is in the state, and state has adopted view tax. It since two thousand and three, so. I don't know.
Yeah, so this feels more like. I'll use an example, it's outside of town, but if you, when you come over one oh one and you, I'm pointing Peter, over the top one oh one, you see. So what would Jeffrey want to do to prevent development on the top of that dock? Prevent the, to protect the view from Jeffrey's surrounding areas, sort of protecting that feature? So is there something we would want to do, say, along, you know, the, the ridges? Just Northwest Road, that you can see as you drive that way. Uh, do we want to protect George's tree in the middle of the fields that you can see from downtown?
There's a tree that, yeah, a tree that Peggy's very fond of, right?
The only problem is, I mean.
Yeah.
The problem is, somebody's property, yeah, somebody.
Yeah, right, right, it's tricky, this one.
How do we tell them you, you can't build there?
Cause we all like your tree.
Yeah.
From the top of those fields off forty-five.
Yeah.
You get a beautiful view of Top of Mount.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's the same thing with the cell towers going in the key.
Yeah.
Block when that not viewed, and it used to be so pretty, now you get wires on the King's Day College, big lights there.
Yeah, so, but I think it's, it may be more around that, okay, I've got a view of something, do I want a cell tower sitting right in the middle of this kind of?
Yeah.
And, and what do you do like?
Well, is something we want to take to the Conservation Commission? I'm torn on it as well.
Love seating view stuff. Also, it just seems like such an infringement on rights. All of us decided that we like your view, so.
Right.
Do anything in your yard.
Right, right.
Well, yeah, and then you have to determine what are those things.
Right, right.
I don't know.
This isn't no action at this time, I got a full plate.
The next one you got.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I crossed it off mine already, actually. The utilities. Well, I think I put this twenty twenty-five because of the landscaping techniques we were talking about. Noise ordinance, we did one in twenty sixteen for commercial and industrial noise. We did the next page already, so then we're on to page seven. Land use. Um, I put twenty twenty-six maybe for a flood plain, but we'll have to see what happens.
Waiting on the map.
Yeah. Um, off-street parking, we've put that in for this year for voters. Expansion of non-conforming lots, I, I don't know what that means. So we need more info.
We talked about that, so. If somebody had a one acre lot.
Yeah.
And they wanted to buy one acre from their. Butter, no.
Yeah.
They'd be expanding a non-conforming lot. But it still wouldn't be a conforming lot.
Right. How do we not allow that now?
You could have, what, what was think about like a farmer, you could have a one acre lot and you could have gardens on it. And then you, I say, George, I want to buy one acre from you that abuts that, cause I want to do more feet, more farming. Doesn't mean you have to have a building.
Right, right.
So I, I, I guess I could see how this actually is not a bad thing.
Okay.
You just can't build on it, cause it's not, it's not conforming.
Well, it refers to.
But you can farm it. You could have maple trees, you could have.
Let's look at the language that's in there.
I mean, people doing like, oh my god, I can't even, I'm sorry, the top of my mind, I need to buy fifty feet north on, I need setbacks and all that. I'm just reading about a, a couple of. Tariffs, you know, one acre. The host. In, in a cow.
Yep.
And they show their products from.
Um, this, well, it says a new section.
We have non-conforming use.
Yeah. Non-conforming structures. I, that's what I was thinking too.
So there's also the word pre-existing that's not in here. So if I had a non-conforming pre-existing lot. And I wanted to buy another acre from somebody, I'd still have a pre. I guess, well. But then, the only part that would be pre-existing would be the one acre. If you added another acre, that would be pre-existing. So that's kind of a, right?
Non-conforming lots of record, section three, read that and see what you think.
So what, it looks like it's affecting, see on article seven. Which says, a non-conforming use may not be expanded or enlarged.
I, you're.
All, although some limited.
He's got the newer version.
Some expansion may be allowed with special exemption by the ZBA. If, in all cases, it meets the minimum lot size for use in the district. So, new sign, yeah, or, or its use in the history. Um, and setbacks and it must meet, so.
So number three here.
Yeah, so it's, it's article seven.
We, you've got the newly numbered one, I've got the old.
Ah, okay.
So the numbers weren't lining up.
And I'll tell you, it's on page sixty-three, which is gonna help.
That's not gonna help either, no, I, I think I found it, it's non-conforming uses you're talking about. Yeah, so this number three, and I, and my version, my version, cause I wasn't gonna reprint the whole thing.
So what it says, what this, do the example I got you.
They, it, you, it use, it may not be substantially expanded or enlarged.
Yep.
So you think that's what this was aiming at, was the use?
But, limited expansion may be allowed if it meets a bunch of things. So, example I use is on the corner of West Road and Hadley, number five, Hadley Highway is a one acre, single family home, non-conforming. If they wanted to buy half an acre from their neighbor to expand their septic system. This says you cannot do it, because it wouldn't be a two acre minimum required in village districts. Because it wouldn't be.
What if you wanted a ZBA?
And this, and the Z, but the ZBA can't approve it, because it's not, it doesn't become conforming.
Really?
Must meet the minimum lot size requirements for its use in the district which is located. Uh, so you got a one acre lot.
It's pre-existing.
It's pre-existing.
Yeah.
Yep, and you want to add a half an acre to it to fix the septic system.
Yeah. We don't even have a mechanism through the ZBA to do it.
Right, and this says the ZBA can't approve it. So it might.
Doesn't seem fair.
Seems restrictive, yeah.
Yeah, seems restrictive, right.
So.
How much is this really? Causing lots of issue?
Well, no, this, they're, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's.
I can see an example of where it could be.
Sure.
Some example.
So, shall I put twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, we'll kick the can on that one.
And I mean, I, we can add it, but.
It's an interesting conversation.
It is, yeah, or we, we can revisit in the.
I mean, we haven't looked, we should look at the tax maps and look around town, see how many non-conforming lots there are.
I.
And then how many pre-existing ones that.
I think I've done that.
There's backlots.
Yeah.
That have no frontage, but they're pre-exist zoning.
Right.
So how do they, if they don't have an easement through somebody else's property? I don't, there's, the basis be, but there's a bunch of them in town, so I hit the him, in pole. Oh, anyways. Definitely, we should.
Put it off, you, let's not forget about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, down to housing. Number one, we got on the ballot. Same with two. And the next. Two are under the scope of work for this year. And same with number five. Economic developments.
Oh, we're doing this.
I know, we're almost done. Um, don't expect an updated version before the next meeting.
No, you didn't.
Unless somebody's gonna volunteer, I'm happy to send you the word version.
Look, it could wait till you get back.
Uh, let's see. Number one, ongoing. Home based businesses, I think we just revisit periodically, especially if something goes to the Z B A. Site plan regulations um, under the twenty twenty five scope work. Um, working with the zoning board to determine whether. Our commercial and industrial. Use is is better implemented through conditional use. Rather than special exception, and I I think this goes to what Steve was bringing up as well, I don't, I don't know. Just in general. Just to revisit how that all works. Conservation and preservation, we have the open space plan under this year's version. Solar energy, soul smart. Uh, this year we'll do the natural resource inventory, hopefully when we adopt the new version of the master plan and. Neighboring towns on shared conservation issues and interests, do you guys work with? Yes, so that's ongoing. And did anybody read the other stuff at the beginning, you want me to keep it as is or to have any changes to introduction and? At first, it's really just that first page, I think Carol did the rest. Which, you know, if you have other changes. Or we can wait till the next meeting. Trying to keep it simple. Since a lot of the stuff came from the other chapters.
I can update it if you want to see to do that.
Absolutely. Although I've already unplugged and put away my computer.
If you get a chance to, if not, that's fine.
I don't, well, I, did I send you a word version or a P D F version, cause I think I emailed. I emailed this to everybody, but I don't know if I sent the word version of the P D F.
Can you copy that in any mail?
Yeah.
Yes, essentially, yes.
Oh, darn it. Okay.
So, uh, we all set for this for the moment?
I think so.
Okay, so there was one other thing I wanted to bring up that's not on the agenda. And I had. I talked to you, Christine, about. The travel trailer R V camper question.
Uh huh.
So the question came up about the. Building that is on. The Pickman lot that we sub divided over on Colburn Road. Because there is a. Trailer or. I don't know what it is, if it's a trailer or camper, but it's there and they they appear to be living in it.
It was supposed to be a temporary trailer. While the house is being built.
Okay, which we have three, they have three years then.
And it's being rented out. Without having gotten a certificate of occupancy. As select board.
Hmm.
So. Alan Pickman was at the select board meeting the other night and he was, he's been informed. Personally stole the property to his noncompliance. So. Yeah, it was, it's the last select board meeting, so. It's, it'll probably come, it's an excellent, too.
So what? I drove by there, it doesn't look like a camper, it it looks.
It's on a trailer, though.
Yeah, it's like mobile homes are going trailers.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like to me. But it's hooked up to septic, there's, it's hooked up to septic and well, I was told. By Pete Caswell. And, um. So that, well, I just, I. We're trying to define our, our zoning, you know, what 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 is allowed, what isn't allowed and. I did find where you can have a. A camper or.
Trailer.
Trailer for up to three years while you build your house. Right, that's not on this, that wasn't on this, though.
I think it was all in the email, yeah.
That is true, but you're not supposed to.
Temporary use of manufactured houses.
Yeah, oh, they're free, what's that, I'm sorry.
They're renting it out.
Yeah.
I don't know how you enforce that.
Getting all the.
You might.
Yeah.
You might need to talk to the town attorney, but.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was told that.
Well, before you go into the attorney, we're gonna talk to the people.
Give them an opportunity. For it.
Yes.
Where you're doing it legally, yep. That's always the best way.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Yeah, cause I guess I I misunderstood, um, our zoning as far as what mobile homes. You know, there's a different street, a manufactured, like a double white house comes in on trailers, gets set on a foundation.
Yeah.
But a mobile home comes in and gets set, it's on tires, it's on wheels, it gets set usually on blocks. And, um, and we have several of those.
But they, they are allowed.
We allow them, yeah.
And this doesn't have the C O A, right, so that's what.
They didn't get a certificate of occupancy, yeah, but I mean, is that, is that a mobile home, is that what that is? Cause it doesn't look like a camper.
Alan's place.
Yeah.
I hope it's just temporary.
Yeah, could, well, I, tiny, I guess, I was thinking. I was on this tall tiny home thing, cause that, it looks like a tiny home. But it also looks like a mobile home. Which we allow.
Right.
Anyway, it's a conversation, I, we don't have, I mean, we're not any, any authority, you are, you're a selectman. But I just want to be, I wanted to know, I want to know how to interpret our zoning as to what is allowed, what isn't.
One thing it does say in the zoning is, it may be located temporarily on a lot for up to three years. While a permanent dwelling is being constructed. So is there a building permit for that permanent dwelling that is supposed to be constructed? On the same lot as this occupied temporarily.
I'm trying to think, but I think he might have built it.
Okay, so then that building permit has a year to start.
It was our understanding that this was a temporary.
They're willing for it to get a well.
It was our understanding that he was gonna live there while he was going.
Yeah, it's an interesting.
Well, they put their septic in, they put a well in.
Power.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an interesting one.
I lost my forty five, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for somebody to. Just trying to make it happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to live in a trailer and build their, I mean, that's. That's America, that's a good thing, but. But what's going on here, yeah, what's really going on, yeah.
Right, right.
But I mean, again, it's not our, as planning board, it's not our job to be, it's George's.
It's a select word. Code enforcement. It's a code enforcement.
Anyway, uh, other business, um. Legislative updates, tax back backup.
There's still a whole bunch of bills being talked about and. Commented on, I think I sent a legislative update from N H M A.
Good, there's a lot there.
With their positions on the bills being presented. There's another one I saw. House Bill two ninety six, this bill adds an alternative condition and provides another pathway to authorization for local governing bodies to erect buildings along private roads. The local governing body, after review and comment by the planning board, or after establishing that the private road identifies and complies with policy adopted by the governing body of the municipality. Has voted to authorize the issuance of building permits um, for the erection of buildings on the private roads.
That would include rainy margins.
Yeah.
P R D.
When, when he first came for the boards, he wanted a private road in there.
Mm hmm. So, yep, and then I think I sent out the ones from twenty twenty four, and then we talked about the butter. One that came up at the last meeting.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah.
Diagonal, diagonal.
Yeah, the diagonal. Now, yeah.
That's a good example, that.
Yeah, the drawing, right.
The quick stop down in. Key Bridge or wherever it is.
Yep, yeah, you'll see.
I think I just read in the paper today. That the state is. Trying to. Reduce the size of lots. Did you read that?
Based on soil.
Would base on soil, yeah.
Yeah, and so in towns where have septic and.
Twenty two.
Well, it's.
Twenty two thousand, twenty two hundred square feet.
Yeah, and then it's for towns that don't have town water sewer, it's based on the soil.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't know that that's gonna go anywhere, that's, that's the word on the street.
Well, I read that, it's, that's. As I've always said, you have to have, you have to put water and sewage.
Right, and I think N H M A's position is that they want the towns to be able to decide what's appropriate or. But, yeah, there's not a one size fits all solution.
Tax maps, we're.
Nope, wait after town meeting.
Wait for town meeting, right, well, that's. G I S mapping. Yes. Driveway, um, regulation updates.
I've been working on weekend on.
So you, um, I won't be at the next. Planning board meeting, um, do you, will you be able to hand off what you've worked on, I know you're not planning to run again?
I'll probably have it later, cause I'll be out of town next.
You might change your mind.
I might.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, if you get a handoff.
Yeah, I do, I need to hand off, but I will, I'll, thanks to you, I'll come.
Okay, that's great.
Of course, we have our, our proposed zoning amendments, are we, do we have any plan, do we need to? How are we gonna educate, um?
Well, last year I went to the candidate's night and spoke about it, but I won't be there for this, that, this year, so. Another planning board member, I know Russ was there last year because you were running.
Right, yeah.
So he answered some questions, but.
I'm gonna be running the candidate's night this year.
Oh.
Because Phil Larry has to be out of town, so he asked me if I do it.
Mm hmm. Otherwise, no, I mean, what we're presenting at the ballot is, has the language that we're presenting.
I haven't heard any pushback at all.
I haven't either.
That doesn't mean. People go both ways, but it's.
Yeah.
Just haven't heard any negative, or any pushback.
I haven't seen the final language for the G I S mapping, but I think that's finalized, yeah.
I heard it's not, it's probably, I hope you.
Oh.
I'm not sure it was presented in the best light at the budget hearing, to be honest.
It wasn't? Well.
Yeah, well, I. I don't think, Bill didn't seem to know as much about it. As, you know, maybe Russ could have presented.
So Russ, are you gonna, are you gonna be our spokesperson at town meeting on the floor for that, yeah? Well, I mean, I think the biggest obstacle with that is just to get the town to understand that's six thousand dollars a year.
Right.
If it wasn't for that, I think there would be no pushback, it's a no brainer.
Right.
It's just, it's, it's another, uh, reoccurring expense every year in our budget.
Right.
And it's, it's experience, we have, we have, people have to be able to see the value with that.
Right.
You have to be able to sell them on, this is worth it, trust me, long term, this is gonna be a really good thing for us.
Yeah.
But, um. How do you do that?
It's hard, cause I know myself value, but. Probably for a board member. Conservation commission, again, town, different boards could find all kinds of value, I think.
So you're focusing on like the overlays that you can do, right, and the other information you can pull in.
Yeah, yeah, like if you were looking at conservation, I want to go more into conservation or, um. Looking maybe wildlife quarters, oh, I own all these different pieces of land, but this one's a wildlife quarter, that would be the one, though.
Yeah.
So that, that way, I suppose. Karen Hughes didn't show up. Some people want to hike, classics roads, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it's like a helpful mapping tool of our town, right, like. As compared to what it is right now.
There's really, to be honest, there's a nosy quality to it.
It knows.
My mom and dad, you know, they tell people, do they, like, you know, just like how people in Google Earth zoom in and check out other people's yards? Look at all the stuff you can do on this.
Oh, we know Russ's secret now.
Yeah.
You have a load of darks on the clothesline out there. Tomorrow will be a little white. Yeah. Oh, boy. Well, I guess it's all about presentation and the feel of the meeting and. And if the selectmen. Do have a lot to say, I mean, if the selectmen stand up and say, we're in favor of this, it's actually a good. Thing for the town, then that pulls a lot of weight, usually if the selectmen pack it.
We, we take turns. Representing the articles. And then we might speak on.
We just be positive about this one?
Yeah. Do you think it's worth, um. You know, writing something up for the Conservation Commission or? Anybody else in town that might?
Yeah, she probably writes up to them, some kind of thing. It doesn't stand what it is.
Yeah.
Even if it gets posted on Facebook.
Yeah.
Just get it out there, that's what people talk about, so they can.
Ask questions, yeah.
Get the conversation started, yeah, cause rather than have them show up Saturday morning and. And now, what, what is this mapping, oh, six thousand dollars a year, you know, he's. That might not be a good way.
Right.
That'd be better to get it out there.
Maybe on the Facebook thing, put a couple links to other towns, similar size, use the same thing.
Mm hmm.
So then go press buttons.
Yeah, that was a, that was a big thing, too, is that how many other towns in New Hampshire do it, I. My dad always said temples different, we don't copy everybody else, just cause they do it, we don't have to do it, but, but. In some cases, yes, it's good to be watching what other towns doing, if we're in the minority, why are we? Why, why? Why are all these towns around us doing it and we're not, and I'm sure they care about their dollars.
Mm hmm.
You know, their budget, too.
Right.
But they decided to do it, so. I guess, to know that would be.
I think comparing Temple's budget with all those towns around. I think we might have a little budget. I would share.
We're, we're frugal. Hmm. Well, all right, so.
Yeah.
We'll work on that, um. The survey, we, we want to do that when, after you get back.
Well, yeah, after a town meeting, cause we'll see the results of the voting at that point.
Yeah. Oh, true, exactly, right. And then.
The webinar.
Webinars.
Next, it's this week, isn't it, Thursday? Housing update, and I think you've probably seen the presentation at the. At the, um. Housing Academy.
Okay.
Probably the same one.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you have a plug for it or not.
The housing academy thing is really interesting.
Yeah.
I enjoyed it, I learned a bunch of stuff, and. There's a bunch of people from different organizations, town organizations from all around, so a lot of people I got to put a face to that I emailed before.
Hmm.
And, um. It kind of felt like the stuff that our zoning, things that we were trying to this year with the, like, the, uh. Three minute conversion stuff, that's the kind of stuff they were talking about that. It seemed like, wow, we're kind of doing what they're suggesting people should do.
Hmm.
Um.
So I signed up for that, but I didn't miss the first two.
Oh, yeah.
Is it gonna have another one on the twenty seventh?
Yep.
Mm hmm.
Can I do that by Zoom or do I have to attend?
That's in person, I think.
Person, but it is recorded.
Yeah.
I have the link from the last one, too, that was recorded, if you.
So you can watch the recording. Okay, well.
Yeah, I think they overbooked for the in-person sessions, cause I was supposed to go and they emailed me and said, would you mind giving up your spot? Since I had gone to the one back in twenty twenty-three, I think. So I gave up my spot, so somebody else who had never been could go.
I signed up for it and they.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, was it?
Yeah, the charrette.
From the charrette, yeah, oh, I've seen that presentation before too then. Yep.
Well.
Well, yeah, I'll share something afterward.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Carter, you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.